Unmute, start video.
Continue.
Continue.
Okay.
Okay. Why is it not?
Start video.
Start video.
The camera's not on.
Right, okay.
It should be pointed to the screen, shouldn't it?
Yeah, but then now hit start video.
I did, but it keeps coming back on. This camera isn't on up here.
I turned the camera on before I turned on the zoom. I'm recording.
Better than not.
We hit that.
I could, I could start my video machine.
Oh.
Should be good.
Okay. I'd like to call for the executive committee this June 1st. We're located at the county courthouse. So everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. We have a period for public comment. Is there anybody who wants to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I have.
Yes.
Is that a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve is written.
Second.
In a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner comments and committee reports. I don't really have anything today. I've had a lot of people talking to me about the challenges with the sales tax and city willing to pay their share was a term by the voters in 1996. That's not all I have. Okay, I have a any K area agency on aging meeting Thursday, the third. Multi-county health meeting, the seventh Monday evening. And my kneecap meeting, which was scheduled last week, got rescheduled and I don't have the date down on that yet, but I think it's the 10th. Other than that, I have nothing.
I would just echo what Chairman Bauer said. I've had several people come up to me that are paying attention to the sales tax issue, and I appreciate their feedback. I appreciate them paying attention, having the discussions, and an attempt to get us to move forward, so.
This is before the board Stacy Waggle, solid waste manager, bid opening for transfer station hopper repairs.
Yeah, did Michelle or someone from her office bring that in there? She was gonna have Pat or Roger open it for me. I can't be there today, it's after a holiday.
Kaylee's opening it.
Kaylee's open it.
Okay, sounds good.
How many bids do we have?
I only have the one bid Stacy for you.
Okay.
It is from the P1 group. The bid for all work specified is thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The alternative total bid for the three eighths inch plate is forty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
Stacy, does it surprise you that you only have one bid?
Um, it really doesn't, because some of the, we sent it out to nine contractors in the, well, eight in the area and one in St. Joe. And I only had one come out and even look. I had several say that we're just too busy and didn't have time to even put in a bid. So it really doesn't surprise me that, well, I guess I had two come out and look, this guy here and one other. So I didn't figure we were gonna get very many bids.
So my recommendation is for you to look at the, look at the fit sheet and review it, make a back those next week for discuss further.
Have my hand on it and look at it. Exactly what we, where we go forward.
Did that surprise you when you, on face value, does that seem like it ballpark?
Well, I, I really didn't have any idea what the cost be quite a bit. It's, it's an extensive repair. It's, it's modifying the building that's thirty, almost thirty years old from, you know, we've done a couple of times, we've gone in and kind of patched things up, but this time it needs completely redone, so I figured it'd be expensive.
Commissioners, if I might make a comment on this, and I helped Stacy prepare the packets for bidding. There are a couple of things to keep in mind here that make this difficult. One is it's an existing facility that's a repair, and the repair had a bunch of things put in that have failed. And so that's why this repair is needed, and they want to make sure that that failure doesn't occur again. In addition, it is one that is on a very tight time constraint, because we have not agreed yet that we would allow for the transfer station to be closed in order to have this done. And not very many people want to bid to do all their work on Saturday and Saturday afternoon and Sunday and try and get a job done in a really short period of time. And so we haven't even spoken with this contractor, and it would be good to speak with them about what kind of time constraints they're gonna have in order to get this accomplished. So there are some complications with it, which definitely would affect the price.
Okay, we'll look for, look forward to Stacy's important report. Abigail, Abby for the United Way Breakfast Support Leadership. Breakfast Support.
Oh, yes, thank you all for allowing us to present today. The United Way is seeking the support of Atchison County again for the annual leadership breakfast. We didn't have the breakfast last year, but we hope to have the event again this year, and we're going to have it as a kickoff to the annual campaign in September. It's going to be September 10th at the Atchison Event Center. In previous years, we've had roughly a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty attendees, and food costs have averaged about four thousand dollars, and that was typically split between Atchison County and the city as a contribution to the United Way. So we're seeking the support of Atchison County again in the way of sponsoring food costs for the event. We are planning to kick off the event and hopefully have a great start to the 2022 campaign. Last year, we raised approximately eighty percent of our campaign goal without having the ability to really do the presentations and reach out to local businesses and employees as we had in the past. So this year, we really hope to hit the ground running with the leadership breakfast and reach our campaign goal of two hundred and ten thousand dollars this year.
So let me ask you a question, so there's a hundred and fifty people attend?
Approximately in the past, yes, and we.
Do they pay for their breakfast?
Yes, yes. So how it typically works is by either table sponsorship or individuals. And in the past, based on how much their sponsorship level was, they were able to either have one seat for twenty-five dollars or as the amount of sponsorship increased, they could sponsor a whole table. So that way employers and local businesses could write one check or sponsor one table and bring multiple employees to the breakfast with them.
So what's the approximate cost of the breakfast?
That's what, I'm still waiting on the food costs from the event center. They've changed up how they handle food costs because of Aramark and outside vendors. But in the past, roughly, the food cost was four thousand dollars.
Well, if there's a hundred and fifty people, let's say breakfast is ten dollars a person. That's fifteen hundred dollars. I'm trying to get how you get the four thousand dollars.
That, Jack, this is Jennifer Maxwell, and I'm the treasurer. Abby just came on in August, and so she hasn't been through a leadership breakfast yet. I could pull the receipt, it was kind of split up. It was about, if I remember right, about thirty-four hundred dollars last time, which was split between the city and the county. I don't think they charged a per-person type deal in the past. It was a buffet, and I think you have attended before, so you should be familiar how they did the food and, and served it. And I think it was just, it wasn't priced at a per-person thing. Now, we can get more information, as Abby indicated, we're working with Travis Grossman, and they're trying to get us some bids so, so we can see what it is. We just threw out an average of approximately four thousand or two thousand would come from the county and two thousand would come from the city if you guys were still willing to provide that same support as you have in the past. And then that also enables you guys to automatically have a table without having to pay the sponsorship, that's part of that as well.
Is there an option to have the food from a local restaurant versus Aramark?
I think that's an absolute option as well, Casey. We're, we're looking at all the options, like I said, since they changed everything up. Abby did reach out to them about three weeks ago, and we just haven't got the information down to, to get an exact price. But if you guys want an exact price, we can definitely get that back to you. I guess this request was just to see if you guys were willing to provide the support as you have in the past.
Well, if we do have seventy-five meals, we know how much each meal would be, and that would, our support should be.
Same.
Meals was, was where our support would be, perhaps?
Yes, yes. And, and that's, that's all that we're asking for, the same type of support. Is the cost of the food, because they're, they do not charge us for the event center itself, which we haven't in the past either. It's basically the only cost to us is the actual cost of the food. So the, we get it rent-free. This year, we already have a speaker lined up, who is gonna be Elizabeth Collins for the hospital, so there's no cost to the speaker this year at all. So the only cost is the food.
And the date on that, again, was September?
Ten.
Okay.
Jennifer, it's hard for us to commit to something we don't know for sure what the costs are.
Yeah, that's why we're just giving you an approximate of what it was in the past. Really all we have to go on right now. If you don't want to commit to an exact cost, but you would, you know, just give us your support like in the past, we can come back with an exact number. If it's a per-person type deal, because that's not how it was priced in the past. We're, we're, this is all new to us, too.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I would be for supporting the breakfast in conjunction with the city of Atchison. I think it's important to get all the leaders together and heading in their same direction. But yeah, I would like to have more information as well.
Yeah, the cost of the meals, total cost of the meals, tax.
Well, and I have a quick question, too, because I was trying to understand. And I know, Jennifer, you and I had had a discussion about United Way in, in the past and the history, and how you guys support all local nonprofits here. And the one question had come up, well, do you support out of Atchison County organizations? And Children's Mercy was the one, which I completely support that, because Atchison County presidents use Children's Mercy often for, for their kiddos. But are there any other organizations in town? I'm just trying to understand the difference of like United Way and Atchison Area Community Foundation. Do you guys have the same? Was Atchison Area Community Foundation created prior to the new leadership of United Way? Or I guess what are the differences in how you guys work together? I know, just to better understand that, because you each look like a hub for nonprofits, and I just kind of want to understand the difference of them.
So no, that, that's a great question. And just attended last Thursday morning to breakfast for the batch day that they're doing. So the, probably the easiest way that I would explain the difference between the foundation and the United Way is the money that United Way collects each year is distributed in that year. The purpose of the community foundation is, is primarily for maybe funding for years to come. It gives an avenue for people who want to do some estate planning, and they don't want to say particularly write ten checks to ten different organizations, they can write it to that community foundation and divide it up between the ten. We are totally separate. The community foundation has just, is just in like their maybe third year, fourth year. Maybe Jonathan would be the best person to ask for that. The United Way has been around clear back into the seventies and eighties, is my understanding from, from Rick Berger. But as far as we do, just to clarify, we do not have all the nonprofits in, in Atchison, but we have, I believe, twenty-one, if I'm not mistaken. That, and don't hold me exactly to that number, but about.
Nineteen, nineteen this year.
Thanks, Abby. And so basically, all the money, so northeast Kansas area on aging is one that I'm just gonna pick out, because that services several areas. But we are assured when they send us their proposal and through the application process, that the money that we give to them goes to Atchison County, is not going to Hiawatha or anywhere else. And Eric, you can probably attest to that.
Yes.
That very separate. Another one is Kansas Legal. And, and they provide a multi-county area, but all the money that we give to them services Atchison County residents, the same way on Children's Mercy. And so.
Nice. No, I just, I think it's important when we talk about streamlining efforts in Atchison County to have those hub organizations, so that I, I just don't feel like county commissioners should, should give out, you know, here and here and here to the selected nonprofits that they have for thirty years, but maybe look at a hub that is solely doing that. And I think from our conversations and learning about your process of an application, and it's really thorough. You know, you hold people accountable that need the funding to understand that the needs, and, and so that was interesting to me, so I just.
And just to kind of do a recap for everybody, this is my understanding on the leadership breakfast. And Jack, you might have some inter, history is, as well, is, is this all started by Trey Cocking and maybe Alan Rebus and Jeff Shulley, when he was at county commissioner? Is it was my understanding that there was a lot of nonprofits that were coming to the city and the county for money? And there was concern about maybe commissioners or those entities handing out money to certain nonprofits, and maybe that's not the best use of taxpayer money. And, and so my understanding is, is Trey and Jeff got together and came up with this leadership breakfast to try to get the business community on board to not only internally help with employee campaigns and get employees participating, but the businesses. And so my understanding, when Trey first started this, this generated about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. All the money went back to the United Way. We had a kind of a motivational speaker all over the board. It didn't have to be one sector. And then the city and the county split the cost of the breakfast. So that's kind of where it all started. I have been on the board for about four or five years since 2016, and I have attended a couple of these. Like Abby said, last year, we did not, we were not able to have it due to COVID in the event center. But Abby did send out letters and just explain, you know, due to COVID, we're not able to have this, but if you already have this in your budget and you would like to send in your sponsorship, we would be glad to take it. And God bless her, we raised thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars and not even had the event. So, so that just showed us from the business community. And it's not just Atchison. Eric, you sat in on one of those meetings several years ago when we were at, I think it was Snowball at the time, and where we, at the city and the county level, came up with names for contractors and, and those kinds of people that did business that you guys gave. So I don't want to use the word put pressure on them, but encourage them to give back to the Atchison community, because they were getting money from bids and stuff from you guys. So it kind of is a joint effort to, to make this successful. And we've had very good response. So any, any kind of questions? Or Jack, do you want to add anything as far as the history goes?
Well, I, I think the breakfast has been pretty good. And I don't mind, I don't mind Jill with the cost of the food. And since they're.
We'll get you better, we'll get you better numbers. We were just going off what the past was, and we know those aren't accurate, because they've changed up the food service. And I am all about shopping local, Casey, as well as you are. So we'll see what we can do about getting some bids from some local restaurants as well.
Do, do, does all the people participating have to have numbers in by like the week before? So we're not anticipating a big number and having a lot of leftover food and that type of thing, or how does that work?
Well, we're gonna work on that. I, I totally agree with you, because in the past, they could do some things with that. When it was the event center, I think we had to kind of have numbers in at least ten days ahead of time. Not sure what all that's gonna look like as far where, it was kind of a full-fledged breakfast, if you guys remember right. And we're hoping to make it a very nice event as well, but that was all prepared there. So we're gonna see, working with Susan Turnbull, too, to see what that catering type looks like, but within a reasonable cost. May not be able to have as many options as we had in the past, but, but hopefully make it just as nice. And we always incorporate our partner agencies. We encourage them to set up a table to showcase what they do for Atchison County as well. And we will be including the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts as well to do the showing of the colors like in the past.
Okay, yeah, because I have no problem with the actual numbers, but when you're trying to schedule a buffet and maybe you have half a turnout, that is a big waste. I mean, it's, it can be going to so much better, so many better causes.
Yeah.
So that's the reason my question, I just didn't know how exactly works that portion of the anticipated numbers for the breakfast.
Well, we'll get you some better detailed numbers. And to be honest with you, I have not heard or attended an event out there yet that has had a buffet. I know Rotary has their stuff out there. Abby and I attended a meeting earlier, and it was kind of a box-type lunch, where you went to a station, picked up your stuff and went back to your table. I'm really kind of hoping we don't have to do that, but if that's really what we have to do, we will, and try to accommodate it somehow to still make the event nice.
That's probably a pandemic safety.
It is, it is. So we, we just need to get a little bit more detailed information. Jump on the gun to see if we can get you guys to support.
Okay.
I have one more quick question, just about the organization. So you have nineteen nonprofits currently. How can we, as county commissioners, what is the process to become a United Way agency? Just so we know that, if we're ever talking to someone that may, might not be one of your agencies, that we could point them in the right direction and kind of give them that quick little blurb of how to, how to become a partner with you.
Okay, Abby, you want to answer that?
Yep, I can take that one. So we, we open up application process in, or requests for proposals typically end in November, beginning of December. The application is typically for a program in Atchison County, and that's how we're able to determine. It's much easier to determine that the money is staying here locally. And that also helps us evaluate applications about the need and what the services are, and eliminates sometimes some duplication amongst agencies as well. So they have until the end of December to apply. We do ask for financial reporting. We want to know how many people are served in Atchison County from funding. And then we review in February after we have a soft close of the annual campaign. So we have a rough number about how our fundraising went, and then we can make allocations to the approved partner agencies from there. We did lose a couple partner agencies. Like Jennifer said, we were at twenty-one, we're down to nineteen now. So we're not opposed to other agencies joining. The fewer agencies we have, it, I mean, allocates a little bit more funding to each individually, but we're hoping that this year, by raising and meeting our campaign goal of two hundred and ten thousand, we will be able to allocate more funding to the individual partner agencies. And I think we're also really with a new goal of kind of working with the partner agencies on accountability about where the money is being spent, and also making sure that there isn't a duplication of services. So something we just started doing this past spring, I guess, was we organized a group to discuss housing funds and emergency assistance, because we were receiving a lot of calls for assistance with rent and utilities in Atchison and Atchison County, and also other surrounding counties that don't have a United Way. So we reached out to kneecap, to Catholic charities, to Salvation Army, to the Housing Authority, and we brought everybody together to discuss what they were individually doing, so that everybody's on the same page, so that we're, we're making the most out of the funding we have available, and we are serving as many people as possible in Atchison County as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have these purchase orders on the agenda. So Snyder, you want to, hold on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. First purchase order is for Wagner Excavating and Grading and Backfilling on Bridge Two Seventy in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And this is for backfilling the bridge and final grading. I also, in the, let for bid, put in there a unit price if per cubic yard, if they needed to haul in suitable backfilling material and removal of unsuitable material, which is probably gonna happen on both. And he priced that at twelve dollars a cubic yard to haul in and place and compacted, and then eight dollars a cubic yard to remove the unsuitable, which the, it's been, it's been sitting there for a long time on this project. And I'm gonna guess that most of it is, is pretty wet and soggy and not suitable. So looking for, okay, the purchase order on Wagner.
Commissioners, have questions, Joe?
No, that's what we were in mute last week.
The Chairwoman entertained a motion to approve the purchase order for Wagner, Wagner State, for thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Quinn, second vice, Fisher doll. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
The second purchase order is for engineering services from MHS and Huscaloosa on Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Plan Bridge F point oh twelve dash four in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Joe has been doing the inspections on all of the, all of these bridges lately. Like, there's been four of them. He's done a really good job. And his fee had went up, and that's what this purchase order is for.
Any questions for the Commissioners? So the Chairwoman entertained a motion to approve the purchase order of Acrophys that be Henderson Solutions, twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. It allowed the chairman to sign the letter of understanding.
Also move.
So moved by Commissioner Doll, second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass the street is here.
We have another purchase order for Lander SPS Roofing Systems for the noxious weed building in Effingham to spray foam the ceiling to start with, at seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Currently, there are birds coming in the eaves on the ribs of the tin. They will cut the old insulation down, put a form of wire mesh in front of the ribs, and then spray foam the whole ceiling.
What was the total again, Joe?
Seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Yeah, this has been a problem, ongoing problem for years, and it's getting worse and worse. I know when I first got on commission, it was already.
I know when I first got on commission, it was already a problem when uh, uh, noxious weed was in the building. So it's it's getting bad.
So the Chairwoman entertained a motion to approve a purchase of Atlanta, Atlanta SPS Roofing Systems LLC. And Hiawatha for seven thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, type of motion. Moved by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Noel. Further discussion. Anything else today, Joe?
Excuse me. I'd like to bring up two eighty-sixth that uh, we didn't get awarded any funding for two eighty-sixth. I talked to uh, K Dot. And the reason being they thought our support, local support was wonderful. We did a real good job on job on that. Uh, we need to do a little bit better on our economic development plan, how it how it will affect and and grow the economy. Get it to legislatures what we're, what we're seeking to try to help get the word out, basically. Talked to K Dot, which I will do. Uh, let's see, I don't know if I'm missing anything else. We need to probably expand on our funding. We applied for a ninety-ten. First ninety percent, ten percent our share, cost share. And it was brought to my attention, it was Michelle Needham, so I talked to that maybe we needed to try to look at uh, seventy thirty. Our percent being thirty, increase our our amount of contribution. But I I do want to thank everybody who uh, completed the forms and sent them in. They were very impressed with with our community support. And that's just kind of an update on on two eighty-sixth. If any of you have any questions. Ask, I'll try to answer them if I can.
Uh, real quick, now when we reapply in the fall, when is that application due? Do you know?
I'm not for sure. It just says fall application and they will, they will send it out, just kind of like they did the spring and and we're. We're fairly prepared as far as the uh, engineering work and the process there. We've just got to uh, try to do these other few things a little bit better. Decide what we think we can contribute and apply for that and do a little bit better job getting the word out to. Uh, people who can really help.
So can, like the letters of support, can they be resubmitted with the new application?
I will find out.
Still be pertinent information that could accompany that, but.
Maybe we can get some more.
Yes, uh, but keep us in the loop on what we need to do to uh, make us more attractive to the state.
All right. And then like I said, I've talked to uh, Joe McAfee, who helped put this together, who did most of it, other than us gathering the information, give it to him. And he's aware of it and we'll, we won't quit on it. We're going to keep trying, so.
Let all your people, let all your people out there at the Road and Bridge know how much we appreciate them. County Commissioner really appreciates everything they do.
I will, and I do appreciate your support also.
Well, and I know it was a bummer for all of us to get this news. Because we were all so excited because the community support for this program, for this application was phenomenal. And I think we all went in, you know, just really excited about it and to find out that we didn't get it. It's a bummer, but it shows us what we did good and what we need to improve on and that we'll continue to move forward with opportunities like this. But also not lose sight that we have to look at other avenues. Um, because just because we don't win a grant, doesn't mean we're not going to take care of the county. So we're going to uh, continue to to work it at looking at funding and and sticking. Together to move forward how we need to, so. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks.
Thank you.
County Council updates. A couple of things. On Friday, we sent out letters to all of the properties that we had identified as. Being eligible for inclusion on the next tax sale. That's to give them the landowners an opportunity to. Make arrangements to get the taxes paid so that the property wouldn't be included in the abstracting include and incur additional. Additional costs. I think there were somewhere around a hundred and twenty of those letters that that went out. And gave a deadline, just in a relative short deadline, just two weeks uh, for people to make contact back. Guess it's three weeks, I think it was June eighteenth was the deadline, was given. Uh, for people to make contact with the Treasurer's Office about. Making arrangements to get the taxes paid so that they uh, could avoid being sent for abstracting being included in the next tax sale. Uh, so I haven't heard yet, but I'm sure they will be getting plenty of inquiries. About those letters and you may be getting some feedback about those as well. Related to that and in preparing for the the next tax sale. Uh, we will need to do abstracting, we need to have abstracting performed on the parcels after. After we determine which ones are eligible and that is the abstracters go through the records of the Register of Deeds. And uh, go through the court system records and. UCC filings, et cetera, and determine everyone who might have an interest in property. So that we can name those people as defendants in the tax sale, so they can get notice of the sale or property sold. Keith Wilson has done that for us the last two tax sales before that. They've done the last all of the tax sales as far as I know. At one time he used to use the split uh, workup between commerce abstracting and O'Keefe Wilson Commerce Abstracting. Is no longer uh, no longer operating, so we just have one and that's O'Keefe Wilson. Uh, in the last tax sale, I think we paid a hundred and twenty dollars per parcel for. For the abstracting. Uh, we actually get more than just the abstracting back in our. Deliverables, if you will, in our contract with them. We get the information back electronically, so we don't have to retype it. And that's been a, been a big benefit. It was twenty nineteen, uh, two years ago when we. Last sent property out for abstracting. Late twenty, late in twenty nineteen. I don't know, I talked with uh, with O'Keefe Wilson there, uh, willing to provide the services. At that same rate, a hundred and twenty dollars per parcel. Uh, the other choice would be to send it for, send an RFP out. I don't think that there's any, I'm not aware of anyone else that would uh. Be likely to to bid on here in Acheson County. Uh, if you want to send it out, we can and see if we get responses from. Well, neighboring towns from Leavenworth or from Donovan or Brown County or wherever. So that's really a decision for you. We got a few weeks, so if you want to send it out, we could send it out, but. It's completely up to you.
I mean, I would prefer to stay local, but I don't think it hurts to get another couple bids, just to make sure that we're staying competitive. It makes.
I I always like sending it out. If it's like everything else, we've been sending out, we'll only get one bid pack. Uh, but that's maybe due to the volume and uh, and shortage of health in different places. But I I'm okay either way.
I I I have no problem with paying. We've been paying it for several years. But I was like, another bit, but the idea of locals, this is a company who also operates to Acheson County. They they do. I've also checked some other counties with what they're paying, just basically what I could find on Google. Miami County is paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars for parcels. Uh, there, but it looked like Barton County was paying eight-five, so. I I think we're within the realm of reasonable. I also know that Towne County sent theirs out for with a with an RFP. And uh, Keith Wilson. One that is. That should be available, I know, probably been at least uh, probably at least two. I I don't think you're, you're not making a bad deal if you make, if we just do the same deal, it's, I mean, it's going to be a good deal. Whether there's a. Another vendor that could provide us with what we want for a lower price, I, I'm skeptical of that, but it's possible.
Well, they have to come to Acheson County for the registry of deeds. So.
But if there's an eighty-five dollar bid out there.
It would just show that we're making good decisions.
Um, I think you should have in front of you a contract. I'm seeing a blank sticker from Marlin firm for Austin Purchase Drive Away. Emailed it to. The contract is a, it it's a hundred dollars because it's purchasing an option that relates to. The, the new K dot off system bridge, which is. I thought we already approved that, so.
Nineteen point oh E three.
Nineteen point oh dash E three. Uh, I don't think we have approved that. I don't think we have approved that. You approved. Dave Beach and Ch- Schwab Eaton on contracting. There are two landowners. We we try to be proactive by getting the commitment from the landowners prior to inferring all the costs. To make sure we'll be able to acquire.
Case of the prick, I think, so.
If if you've you've seen a million of them so far, as I said, it's only a hundred dollars. And so I would ask that uh, you. Approve that, give the commission, or give the chairman authority to sign on the gap for the commission.
On a commotion.
Uh, how are we on the past tax sales? All the litigation on the people that were wanting to void the sale? How is that going and what's the timeline on that?
One of. There there were basically two objections, so one of them, the other one is not yet. There's some documents for requesting before that period. The ones on Friday.
Ones for Marlin and ones for Chelton.
I don't have a resolution to reappoint. Do we have a resolution number for the? To reappoint the project.
Is that on the agenda? Oh, yes, I didn't see it. Thank you. I didn't read far enough, sorry.
I need that, that was part of.
Okay, the Chairwoman entertained a motion to uh, let the chairman sign an agreement for right away acquisition. Uh, replacement bridge nineteen dash three, that nineteen dash E dot three with Mr. Furman. Uh, for a hundred dollars. Motion.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Noel. Second by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, next I have a, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Acheson County, appointing. Deb Thompson is a appraiser for Acheson County, Kansas. Do I have a motion to approve uh, this appointment?
All seconds.
Second by, moved by Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Noel, discussion.
I I would like to just say that I think Deb's done a fantastic job since she's been in and I'd like to see her stay.
Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm going to sign this, we'll let Michelle fill in all the blanks. How is yours, one place for me to sign? Yes. I signed the only spot I see, so. Any, it's occurred for public comment, any public comments today? Seeing none, Chairwoman entertained a motion to adjourn at one forty-seven PM.
So move.
So move by Commissioner Noel, seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.